This meeting is called to order. I'd like to welcome everyone this morning. I'd like to open with a brief statement. Since April the first, the county has experienced a technical disruption that has restricted our ability to communicate via email with external contacts. This disruption has also resulted in a shutdown of our website. Our team continues to work tirelessly to restore functionality and is hopeful that we'll be able to achieve a full restore of our systems at some point this week. We sincerely apologize for the inconvenience this has caused. Our staff remain available to you. Please visit a county facility or call staff for assistance. I'd like to thank everyone for their patience and thank staff for their adaptability during these challenging times and for staff who have been working diligently to resolve this issue.
Certainly, be it resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on April 6th, 2020 be adopted.
Someone to move and someone to second. Councilor Ketchabah and Councilor Martin. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's Carrie, thank you. Are there any disclosures or pecuniary interests in the general nature thereof? Seeing none? There are no presenting petitions, presentations, or delegations today. So I'll have you read the resolution.
Certainly, be it resolved that we do now move into Committee of the Ballot.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Councilor Mennel and Deputy Warden Marks. All those in favor? And that's Carrie, thank you. Any reports of council? The first one up is Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Fundraising Committee. Resolution, please.
Be it resolved that the report titled Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Fundraising Committee Appointment dated March 29th, 2020 from Councilor Jaguerre be received and filed, and that County Council appoint Dutton-Dunwich Councilor Emerilis Trulard to sit on the Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Fundraising Committee for the remainder of 2022.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Uh, Councilor Jones and Councilor Purcell. And I'll turn it over to you, Councilor Jaguerre.
Thank you, Madam Morton. I think the report is definitely self-explanatory and I want to thank the Council of Dutton-Dunwich for appointing a new committee member. So if council approves this recommendation, we'd be happy to welcome her on the committee.
Are there any questions for Councilor Jaguerre? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's Carrie. The next item up is Library Museum and Archive Service Updates.
Excuse me, be it resolved that the report titled Library Museum and Archive Service Updates, December 2021 to March 2022 dated April 1st, 2022 from the Director of Community and Cultural Services be received and filed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Councilor Martin and... Who would like to second it? Councilor Jaguerre. Good morning, Brian, and I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, good morning, Madam Morton, and through you to County Council. Um, this report provides service update for Library Museum and Archives. As we emerge out of the many restrictions that were in place due to COVID-19, I'd just like to highlight a few items if I could in the report. Library Children's Programs are back after being suspended for two years. We had great uptake on our March break programs at all our branches. For instance, we had a magician perform at our Dutton branch. Three sessions that were capped at 25 registrants and they were immediately bugged. We had sixty participants in one day for a Mr. Potato Head contest and a hundred and five in Fort Samy in one day for some pass programming that we did. We've been hosting vaccine clinics in partnership with Southwest Public Health. So far, we've held clinics at Belmont, Dutton, and Fort Virwell branches and we're doing a whole one as well at Rodney with it that was switched to the International Club and we've been helping facilitate that as well. Great uptake for this in the first clinic in Dutton. We had twenty-six people get vaccinated, either a booster or child shots that day. So I'm happy to participate in that partnership. We have three murals at Fort Virwell. Belmont and Shenton are now complete and we're progressing on three more at Fort Bruce, Dutton, and Rodney. These murals are being installed as a result of coming before from funding through the state of Donavere Evans-Bushel. And hopefully you get a chance to see these murals when you're out and about. Archives has made a significant acquisition of records and photographs from the office of now former MPP Jeff Yurk. This joins a solid collection of MP and MP papers we have in our collection. And I would like to thank Galaney for helping to facilitate this donation. She played a major role in giving us the opportunity to go in and make the acquisition and working with Mr. Yurk. And now she gets the opportunity to actually work with us to help process it too. So, and finally, we're entering a new frontier to preserve the county's social media activity as Archives now has a service in place called the Internet Archive, which helps us preserve the county's social media accounts and websites. And I want to commend Gina and Amber in Archives for the time they put into getting this service off the ground. We know that COVID is not fully behind us, but it does feel good to fully welcome the public back again to enjoy our services. And I want to thank our staff, certainly our staff, for their perseverance over these last couple of years and the great service that they continue to provide with the challenges that we've had. So with that, I gladly answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any questions for Brian? Councilor Martin, go ahead.
Just one comment. The VIMI lecture was extremely well attended. It was absolutely full. I don't think a museum could have held anymore safely. So, or Heritage Center. I just thought it was very well attended and I think people were delighted to be able to get out again.
Yeah, are there any further comments or questions from council? Councilor Jaguerre, go ahead.
Madam Morton, something that's not in the report. I just saw floating on social media about the community conversations that appears to be in collaboration with our libraries. But there was not a lot of information yet, so I was wondering if you could expand on that.
Yeah, thank you through you, Madam Morton. The, uh, that's an initiative that our Digital Services Librarian is leading. And, um, of course, right now it's a little difficult to... With the network challenges we're having right now, but it's an opportunity for us to engage in a whole new segment by using our social media tools and then as well engaging that particular branch in what needs are in that community. But it's early days with this, so I don't have a lot to report because this actually is up till April 1st and I'll give you a subsequent update on that.
Okay, I'll welcome that, thank you.
Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's Carrie, thank you. And thank you, Brian. The next item up is Homes Nursing and Maintenance Department Policy Manual Reviewing.
Be it resolved that the report titled Homes Nursing and Maintenance Department Policy Manual Review and Revision dated April 13th, 2022 from the Director of Homes and Senior Services be received and filed, and that County Council approve the Elgin County Homes and Senior Services Nursing and Maintenance Department Policy Manual Review and Revisions for 2022.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Councilor Mennel and seconded by Councilor Jones. And good morning, Michelle, and we'll turn it over to you.
Good morning and thank you, Madam Morton, through you to members of council. So before you, it's a report on the Homes Nursing and Maintenance Department Manual Reviewer Revisions. As per long-term care home legislation, annual review is required to ensure inclusion of best practices and legislative guidelines. The managers of the resident care nursing department reviewed the nursing manual and the maintenance department was reviewed by the county's building science technology technologists. Minor revisions to the nursing policies and for the maintenance policies, there was the addition of a heating, ventilation, and air conditioning policy. The revised policy changes are all minor in nature and will be communicated to staff, residents, visitors, and contracted workers as required within the legislation and also through the SIRG online education portal. The recommendations are before you and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Are there any questions for Michelle? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's Carrie. The next item up is Homes Pharmacy Services Amending Agreement.
Be it resolved that County Council approve the changes in operating procedures and/or services with an authorization for execution of an amending agreement prepared by the county solicitor, which incorporates those changes, and that the warden and chief administrative officer be authorized to sign the amending agreement with CareRx Pharmacy Incorporated for the ongoing provision of pharmacy services, and that the report titled Homes Pharmacy Services Amending Agreement dated April 19th, 2022 from the Director of Homes and Senior Services be received and filed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Councilor Martin and seconded by Deputy Warden Marks. And I'll turn it back over to you, Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Morton, through you to members of council. Again, the Homes Pharmacy Services Amending Agreement Report. Long-term care home legislation requires long-term care homes to provide a number of services related to drugs and medications as well as to retain a pharmacy service provider. That provider must work collaboratively to develop, evaluate, and improve the home's medication management system as well as obtain and maintain drugs in the home safely. CareRx Pharmacy is our current pharmacy provider for our homes. In April of 2021, the Ministry of Long-Term Care provided notice to long-term care homes regarding the Long-Term Care Medication Safety Technology Program. This included some funding for three years. This funding, we met with CareRx Pharmacy several times in 2021. The technology options available at that time were not what we were looking for and so we had additional payments in March of 2022 and we were able to, that resulted in the development of proposed changes in the operating procedures and our services, including technology, which meet the Medication Safety Technology Program requirements. Those changes are reflected in the draft amending agreement, which was included in the agenda. And so the recommendations are before council and I'm happy to answer any questions in this regard.
Thank you, Michelle. Are there any questions concerning this report? Councilor Jaguerre?
Thank you, Madam Morton. Through you to Michelle, I was just wondering, because we know now that technical disruptions are very much a possibility. Does that affect the agreement at all? Are there any vulnerabilities? Are there any specific clauses we need to have in case, let's say, their system was disrupted?
That's a great question and something I can take back to the pharmacy for further discussion if required. Are the technology that's being offered is all through Point Click Care and so Point Click Care has not been interrupted at this time. So I think that the technology is probably appropriate, but it's appropriate for me to go back and to have conversations with both pharmacy and Point Click Care.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions for Michelle? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Michelle.
Thanks, have a good day.
Next item up is Elgin Centives Program Review.
Be it resolved that the county of Elgin should continue funding and administering the Elgin Centives Community Improvement Plan with two intakes per year and refocused priorities, targeted marketing, and updated evaluation criteria, and that staff be directed to continue to work with the local municipal partners to conduct an annual review of the Elgin Centives program to ensure program alignment with community needs, and that during the annual budget review process, council identify the extent to which they will participate in the Elgin Centives Financial Incentives Programs and that the $80,000 from the former property tax vacancy rebate program be used to fund the 2022 Elgin Centives program.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Councilor Mennel and Councilor Jones. And I'm going to turn this over to Carolyn. Good morning, Carolyn.
Morning, thank you, Madam Morton. Through you to council. Following council directions, staff in partnership with our local municipal partners conducted a review of the Elgin Centives program to ensure that the program remains aligned with current community needs. So today's presentation will include some Elgin Centives background, a review of the program, which includes feedback from our local municipal partners, and next steps and recommendations. So a community improvement plan is a tool that municipalities can use to encourage redevelopment activities so that lands, buildings, and infrastructure are effectively used, reused, and restored. So the goal of a community improvement plan is to drive private investment in a cohesive and coordinated manner. So Section 28 of Ontario's Planning Act provides powers to municipalities to develop financial incentives to private property owners through the creation of a CIP. Planning Act also restricts how upper-tier municipalities can participate in these community improvement plans, but it does allow upper-tier municipalities to make grants or loans to its lower-tier municipalities for the purposes of... So Elgin Centives was created in 2015 and it was developed as an innovative way for the county to support its lower partners or local municipal partners in establishing and administering CIPs. The framework was created at the county level, but the CIP was adopted at the local level. And prior to adoption by the local municipalities, the CIP was circulated to the ministry for their review and comment. The goals and objectives as stated in the CIP are to stimulate economic growth and diversification, to improve quality of place for residents and visitors, and to improve the stability and sustainability of the tax base. And Elgin Centives aims to support private sector development in the following five key areas: downtowns, main street areas, agricultural areas, ports, lakeshore areas, key tourist and outdoor recreational areas, and number five was added in 2019, employment areas, industrial lands. So the program is administered by the county in partnership with our local municipal partners through an implementation committee. The program begins with a pre-consultation meeting with interested applicants. During the pre-consultation meeting, staff learn more about proposed projects and help advise interested applicants about whether or not their project is eligible for funding and which incentive program would be most suited for their situation. Once applications are received, the implementation committee needs to evaluate the applications and make a decision on them. Successful applicants then have a year to complete the approved work and once the work is completed, staff inspect the finished project and the grant is paid. And the implementation committee, as appointed by County Council, includes as county staff appointees the manager of planning, the director of financial services, the business development coordinator, the director of engineering, and the general manager of economic development. Also on the implementation committee are local municipal appointees and these are the chief administrative officers from each local municipality. So the next few slides give an overview of the different incentive programs that are available under Elgin Centives. So there is the Tax Increment Equivalent Grant and this is for major projects and brownfield developments and the goal is to stimulate major investment by deferring part of a property tax increase as a result of a redevelopment or rehabilitation project. There's also the Facade Signage and Property Improvement Grant. Again, that's fairly self-explanatory. There's the Building Improvement Restoration Grant, Building Conversion Expansion Grant, Energy Efficiency Retrograde Grant, and an outdoor art grant for things like outdoor art installations and murals. So also available are the feasibility, design, and study grant and this is meant to assist with the completion of studies and plans that will investigate the potential of or support a new business or development project. Application and permit fees grants. So this is a rebate or of building permits and planning fees for certain projects. And the next two are supplemental grants, multiple property owners supplemental grant. If a group of property owners in the same area decide to apply for a grant, they can have some additional funds to coordinate their project. And it's similar with the Sabre Elgin Grant as well. If an applicant is part of the Sabre Elgin program, they are eligible for additional funds as well. The Elgin Arts Trail has been disestablished, so that grant is no longer available. And there is also an environmental study grant, which is one of our new ones from 2019 and it is to assist owners of brownfield sites with undertaking environmental studies to learn more about the type of contamination, environmental risks, and potential remediation requirements and costs. And then also the Brownfield Financial Tax Assistance Program, which is to encourage the remediation and rehabilitation of brownfield sites by providing tax assistance at the beginning of the cleanup process and throughout the implementation stage. So the next two slides provide some information on the number of approved projects for each incentive program as well as the grant value for each incentive. The most popular incentive programs are the Building Improvement and Restoration Grant as well as the Facade Signage. All right, so annually, the implementation committee may decide which financial incentives will be in effect for that particular year. And important to note is the annual budget for Elgin Centives does not fund the county portion of new tax assistance programs. These incentives are provided as reimbursements in the year following payment to Elgin County and therefore do not require funding. So after six years of the Elgin Centives program, it's time to review the program's goals, administration, and successes to make sure that they're still aligned with community needs. So some of the questions that we asked during this review process was, do the goals still reflect our community needs? What are the areas in the county that need improvement? What are we trying to achieve? And do available incentives respond to community needs? Target the areas that require improvement? And are they well-suited to accomplish what we are trying to achieve? So, um, the first concern that was noted, again, we met with the local municipalities and we listened to the different concerns that they had about the program and one of the concerns, what? I think I'm on the, sorry. Wrong side. So some of the considerations that we kept in mind as we were doing this review was that local businesses need support now. Many businesses took out loans during the pandemic to help them get through the pandemic. We would also like to encourage new investment in Elgin County and the CIP is one of the programs that we have and it's ready to go, so it's worth consideration. So some of the concerns that we have noted over the implementation of Elgin Centives in the past six years include there needs to be a clear strategy guiding which projects are approved and funded. Approved projects don't always have the impact that they should. There are not enough businesses or new businesses applying or receiving grants. The same businesses keep getting funded and program administration can become burdensome. So the first concern noted was that there needs to be a clear strategy guiding which projects are marketed, approved, and funded. To address this concern, the implementation committee proposed the following priorities for 2022 and that was to promote the redevelopment of vacant, underutilized spaces, promote business public interests in downtowns, main street areas, and to encourage the expansion of the agribusiness sector. Marketing would be focused on these areas and the incentive programs... I've identified a few incentive programs that would align with these priorities. So the Tax Increment Equivalent Grant is one of the incentives that has great potential to attract more investment in Elgin County. It has only been used twice in the past six years, but some regions have had great success in using similar incentives to attract big investments to their municipalities. So a great example would be Niagara Region's Gateway CIP, which provides eligible projects with property tax reductions of between 40 to 100% for five to 10 years. So the Niagara Region credits this program with playing a critical role in landing a $250 million investment that created 220 jobs in the city when GE opened its stores in 2018. So through building relationships in our business community and through targeted marketing, this is one of the grants that we could use to attract more investment in Elgin County. So another concern that we heard was that the same businesses keep getting funded. So to address that, we can target our marketing. Word of mouth has resulted in a lot of interest and I have approximately 25 businesses waiting now to hear about the results of this review. So there is a lot of interest in the community in this program, but are the proposed projects the ones that we want to fund? So we need to identify who the target audience is and discuss how we can reach them. And the enterprise facilitator will play a key role in this. They'll be the boots on the ground and play a very key role in marketing this to our target audience. We also need to prioritize applications from new applicants, from applicants who have applied to the Elgin Centives program before and we need to be strategic about which projects are approved and funded. So to do this, we would review our evaluation criteria and also need to make a commitment not to fund life cycle replacements such as, you know, replacing a roof or something like that. That is just general maintenance. Another concern that we've heard was that program administration has become burdensome. To address this, we could reduce application intakes to two annually. Typically, there were four. And those deadlines would be adjusted. May 1st is an old deadline, so we would take a look at that and potentially make that June 1st and October 1st. And applications for the Tax Increment Equivalent Grant would remain open year-round. We will also start exploring an online application process. So in response to feedback from our local municipal partners and the implementation committee, we would like to enhance our annual monitoring. The monitoring strategy outlined in the CIP includes measures related to total public and private capital expended on CIP projects, the number of jobs created directly through business expansion or indirectly through the engagement of local contractors to complete the work, and the number of startups supported. So we will continue with these measures, but we will enhance the monitoring to include which projects resulted in the greatest increase in municipal property assessment and therefore resulted in the greatest increase in property tax collected. So this measure goes back to the third goal of the Elgin Centives CIP, which was to improve the tax base of the local municipalities. So if council decides to continue funding and administering the Elgin Centives Community Improvement Plan, our next steps would be to review the evaluation criteria and we would use the lessons learned from the rural initiatives and advisory committees review of their grant program and then also train the implementation committee members on the new criteria and the scoring process. We would also develop targeted marketing material and we can present that to the local BIAs, chambers of commerce, community organizations, and use the business or enterprise facilitator to promote the program in key areas as well. And next up would also be ongoing collaboration with our local municipalities to review the program annually and make adjustments as necessary. So this program needs to be continuously reviewed and adjusted as needs the community can change and we want to respond to that. So the next slide, this slide highlights how the Elgin Centives priorities for 2022 align with council's strategic priorities. And with some modifications, Elgin Centives can continue to help plan for and facilitate commercial, industrial, residential, and agricultural growth as we enhance quality of place. As we work to improve the stability and sustainability of the tax base, the Elgin Centives program will ensure that we have the necessary tools and resources to deliver programs and services now in... So the recommendation is before you. And there's also an alternative on the next slide. If you decide not to, or should council decide not to support Elgin Centives, the responsibility for its funding and administration would be transferred to the local municipalities as the CIP was adopted locally by each municipality. There are also some links here, which you may not have had a chance to look at, but can look at later and I'm happy to answer any questions about those or any other questions that you may have.
Thank you, Carolyn. Are there any questions for Carolyn? Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll get it right before we're done, yeah? Anyway, with regards to the tax incentives grants, this clarification. This is twofold, the municipal level plus the county level. Is there any thoughts of how we go about that? Because if, say, South Old says, yes, we'd like to do 50%, whatever. County says, well, that's a little too high and maybe a little less would be appropriate. Does it have to be the same for the this lower tier and the upper tier? Same amount as an incentive? as an incentive? A combination of two different increments? Just a question. I would fully support this and move the recommendation.
Through you, Madam Morton. The implementation committee would make that decision, and it has representatives from the local municipalities as well. So it would be a conversation with the local municipality to come up with something that suits both the county and the local municipality.
Good, thank you.
Are there any further questions? Okay, first, Counselor McPhail, and then Counselor Purcell.
Thank you, Madam Morton. As we are talking about our downtown cores with the Elk incentives, and I think many of us around the table have a residential component to our downtown cores, does Elk incentives, is there a category in there that owners can apply to Elk incentives for upgrades on their residential component?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Morton, there is limited opportunity for residential improvement in the Elk incentives program, although with the building conversion grant, if there is a storefront and they are renovating their upper floor for an apartment, it is certainly eligible for funding. So there's limited funding for residential properties in Elk incentives, but there are some opportunities for downtown developments if they're developing an existing building, redeveloping a second floor for.
Just that being said, is that something that may be going into the future that we do maybe want to consider a little more to assist in upgrading either access or whatever is required to make those housing units more accessible or available to public when there is, as we all know, a serious housing issue that's going on in our communities?
Absolutely. We can certainly market the housing option. I think a lot of people aren't aware of it, so we can create more educational materials around that so business owners are aware that they do have the opportunity to convert some of their space into residential units.
Also, Purcell.
Yes, with the downtown areas, I think it's implied, but I just wanted to be sure. Did we cover off new builds? For example, some of our municipalities have vacant lots. Buildings have been taken down.
Absolutely. That's where the tax grant would come in. So it is a refund of, or a full or partial refund of the tax increase resulting from the new build.
Further questions, Counselor Chagir?
Thank you, Madam Martin. Yeah, definitely like the approach of the enterprise facilitator using a proactive, strategic, targeted as opposed to a more passive approach. So I really like to see that in the recommendation. I'm wondering, in terms of the metrics, I came across a paper, a recent paper from a student at Western who, again, looked at this program in general and said, you know, values assessment is not the best way to measure the impact of these. So and there are a couple of other municipalities who have tried to develop more specific metrics that tie to the strategic plan. So I see an opportunity to continue developing those metrics, especially as you look at the criteria at the front end. That becomes then your metric at the back end to measure if that promised impact was achieved. So I like where this is heading, and if we can continue to fine tune the criteria and the metrics using some other examples out there, I think that would be great.
Through you, Madam Morton. Thank you, absolutely. We will take a look at that, and we will continue to adjust the way we implement and measure our success.
Counselor Martin?
And I very much appreciate, sorry, through you, Madam Morton, I very much appreciate the fact that you are looking at new applications and giving them priorities because that has been a concern of mine. One other thing, concern was that, you know, they can't get a grant and then abandon building it within a year. So that was a concern I had before. So I hope that would be looked at or some way, because once you do it, you don't fund, you don't give them the grant until after they've completed the work. So I just wouldn't like to see, I mean, that has happened in Central Elgin, so, thank you. I'm fully in support of it, and I'd be happy to move the recommendation.
Are there any further questions? And everybody's okay with the resolution as we read? Okay? All those in favor? And that's Carrie, thank you. The next item up is 2021 County Road Maintenance Agreement. Oh, sorry, I missed one, I apologize. Elk Incentives 2021 Year End Review.
It resolved that the report titled Elk Incentives 2021 Year End Review dated March 29, 2022, from the interim manager of Economic Development and Tourism, be received and filed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Ketchupaw and Deputy Warden Mark, and I'll turn it back over to you, Carolyn.
Thank you. Through you to County Council, the report before you provides an overview of the 2021 Elk Incentives Program. In 2021, there were a total of thirty approved applications with a total investment by Elgin of $179,755, resulting in private investment of $608,000. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Carolyn. Are there any questions for Carolyn? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's Carrie, and thank you again, Carolyn. I will move on to the 2021 County Road Maintenance Agreement.
It resolved that the report titled 2021 County Road Maintenance Agreement Financial Reporting dated March 25, 2022, from the General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise and the Manager of Transportation Services, be received and filed.
Please, someone to move and someone to second. Moved by Counselor Mennel and seconded by Counselor Jones. Good morning, Brian, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, Madam Morton. Good morning, Council. This report through you, Madam Morton, details unaudited financial reports for each local municipal partner as required in accordance with the current road maintenance agreement language. Further, and for the first time, the financial reporting template submitted by our local municipal partners adheres to the recent recommendation coming out of the road maintenance review. That said, many municipalities are currently unable to discern specific activity costs based on road classification. Acknowledging the road maintenance agreement expires later this calendar year, staff will soon begin to include all other road maintenance agreement review, report recommendations in a new agreement to be tabled before council later this year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any questions for Brian? Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Yeah, I just, the statement at the end did disturb me, where it says the founding metal provides municipalities the flexibility to manage their own activities and costs. And after many years of experience, allocation amounts have been tested and found to be adequate. When you go back to the chart, Central Elgin has gone behind over $400,000 in those six years. So I don't find that balancing, and I see that Malahide's gone by ninety thousand and South Old, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, Dunagestut, fifty-nine thousand. So some went ahead, but I, the very fact that Central Elgin went behind by 400,000 does not seem like a balanced thing to me. And I know we have been doing the proper reporting as according to the strategic plan review that happened. That's just a comment. The other thing, I have a couple of questions I wanted to ask, if you may. Did all municipalities, you said they are using the new reporting structure, but they don't have the ability to, you know, to know exactly how much was spent on what or how it was allocated?
That's correct.
That's what you said? Okay. Said, if these trends continue, the agreement renewal at the end of this year, will compensation rates be addressed?
Through you, Madam Morton. As discussed as part of the road maintenance agreement review exercise, staff as well as our partners who are participating in that discussion agreed that at least one calendar year of detailed financial information is needed first before a reevaluation of funding, the funding model is undertaken. So we haven't achieved that yet.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions concerning this report? Counselor Chagir?
And Morton, so maybe as a follow up to that, so could, are we going to consider an interim agreement so that there's an opportunity to reopen once there is more financial information?
Through you, Madam Morton, within the existing road maintenance agreement, there does exist language that affords the ability, staff the ability to review the funding model on an as-needed basis. So we'll ensure there's proper language in the new agreement to support that as well.
Because I too was surprised by the last paragraph, because then I looked at last year's report, and it was a copy paste, you know, exactly word for word from last year's report, and it didn't make any nod to the fact that we had reviewed, there was some dissatisfaction, and no, we're not in a position, because of financial reporting, we're not in a position to, to address it just yet. But it certainly, you know, the way it was worded didn't reflect the review that had taken place. So thank you for clarifying that.
Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
And thank you, Madam Morton. Just for that, Central Elgin, because of the records and the way we keep records, we were able to give you, you know, accurate records of that. And I'm aware that some other municipalities have not got that ability, but I think that is very important, and I agree. I hopefully, as Counselor Chagir asked, you know, that that funding can be adjusted once everyone is able to do that, or once you have the information you need.
Are there any further questions? Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Morton. Through you to Brian. So I guess my understanding is it comes down to the record-keeping rate at the lowest level of the road crews marking down their time and, and things that when they're working on county roads, is that my understanding of the lapses? It's just a guesstimate of what, how much time is being allocated?
Yes, through Madam Morton, what we, what we saw as part of the road maintenance review exercise, based on individual municipal submissions, financial detailed submissions is some municipalities have the ability to break out costs based on activity while others, at this point in time, don't. And so until that detailed level of information is provided, it's very difficult to be able to do a thorough analysis and make any sort of recommendations. And so that was a challenge that our consultant noted and accordingly made recommendations in the report for which we're looking to proceed forward with support.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Deputy Warden Marks. I have to agree with Counselor Martin. I see the hightows, and it is disturbing for us. Could be oversight, now county is, is very big, and the sun could be shining at Bam in a big snowstorm at the other end. So every day, but would there be county oversight? To maybe, like, how do we know? I heard when we're sort of estimating, it's difficult. You know, as Counselor Mark said, I, we're confident we're doing our job, and when we see that negative, it is upsetting. How do we monitor that everyone else is doing it?
Through you, Madam Morton. At the present time, county doesn't, Elgin County doesn't have an individual identified to provide oversight on individual municipal operations, road maintenance operations. That responsibility is left to each individual municipality and their road supervisor to, to undertake.
Any further comments or questions? Go ahead, Counselor Ketchupaw.
Thank you, Madam Morton. Certainly, I support the exercise of this review. I think it was important. I think the goal of achieving some kind of uniformity across the county is natural, recognizing that some jurisdictions provide a service that may be over and above municipal county, which may lead to some of the excess of cost. I don't know. But as the general manager has indicated, that it's left to the discretion of the individual municipalities to provide that kind of oversight. So once we achieve some kind of uniformity, whether it's billing out for an administrative component, which not everyone does, or machine time, or wherever else, then we are in a better position to achieve something that's uniform across the county. And I think that's what we're after at the end of the day, so we have a consistent service. So I look forward to actually seeing this process completed.
Further comments or questions? Counselor Martin?
Yes, Madam Morton, just, I'm not certain that anybody, I mean, we're all given the, what you have to do, what you were required to do, and how you were required to maintain things, et cetera. And I don't know of any municipality that's doing above and beyond what they're required. Certainly, Central Elgin isn't, they're doing exactly what they've been asked to do. It's just that we do have, we have tracking in all our trucks, we have GPS, we have everything, so we know exactly when they are, where they are, et cetera. So it's easy for us to fill in all the information that's required. And I know that a lot, you know, a lot of the other municipalities just don't have that ability yet to do that.
Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's Carrie, thank you. The next item up is East Road Multi-Use Path Funding Request.
It resolved that the report titled East Road Multi-Use Path Funding Request dated April 14, 2022, from the General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise and the Manager of Transportation Services, be received and filed.
Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Jones and seconded by Counselor Chagir. And turn this over to you, Brian.
Thank you, Madam Morton, through you to Council. This report is in response to a request from the Municipal Office of Central Elgin requesting funding to assist in cost to install a multi-use path along a portion of East Road. In 2017, East Road did, was facilitated with cycling lanes by way of a shoulder in accordance with recommendations from then the county's master cycling plan. From a 10-year capital plan perspective, East Road is, at the present time, planned to be rehabilitated in 2030 for its entire two-kilometer length at a cost of just over half a million dollars. With respect to sphere of jurisdiction, in accordance with the Municipal Act, sidewalk and multi-use path maintenance and construction is responsibility of the local municipality. As part of the county's first ever transportation master plan, that study does incorporate a review of the county's road network, a functional classification and road rationalization. At the present time, our consultant, IDI Group, has identified East Road to be downloaded to the municipality. I note that, however, noting that final recommendations haven't yet been received, but discussion with each of the local municipalities is ongoing in that regard. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Questions? Counselor Martin?
Yes, the difficulty we're having, obviously, is because it's a rural road setup. It's trying to establish the sidewalk, which all, that's a totally urbanized area now. It is not, you know, rural in any way. And so to establish a sidewalk along the side of a road that has the ditch, and we're using it a multi-use one rather than just a sidewalk, it's going to be a lot more expensive than putting a sidewalk along a, you know, we had budgeted to put a sidewalk along there, but it's now almost double in price to what it would be because of the style of road that it is. And also maintenance, when we have to mow the ditches, et cetera, this is going to make it, because that's part of the road maintenance agreement, that's going to make it very difficult for us to mow. If it was an urban one, then it would be easy to look after, and it would be mown properly. So that was part of the request here. Plus, I have one concern that, that you mentioned that, or that your study here, your transportation master plan, the idea of downloading East Road or part of East Road onto the municipality, that is not just a local road. Everyone from, that is one of the main exits out of Port Stanley if there's an issue. And also because of, there aren't many exits out of Port Stanley, but going up East Road, all of Orchard Beach, all of Hillcrest, et cetera, that's the way they exit Port Stanley and always have. And that's why many people who live And that's why many people who live Malahide Way or whatever, that's how they come into Port Stanley. So I, I don't see East Road entirely as just a local road. It, it, to me, it is part of a regional system because we have so few roads out of Port Stanley that, you know, it, it's a very, it's a difficult municipality, our difficult section in our municipality because it's full of dead ends and, and it floods. The main road out floods, can flood when there's a, when there's a flood. So it, to me, East Road is very important. If there's a flood, it's one way to get out because Carlo and Highway Four or Sunset Road both flood. So it, it is one of the few ways you can get out of the village. So that's just an argument that I'm making when you are reconsidering whether it should be downloaded or not. I'm not certain that I would consider it just a local road. But the other is difficult and as, as we had said before, if we had development charges for the county, it wouldn't be any problem because the developers would have paid for this. And so this, this does concern me and we do want to put it in. There's a park down the road. We want to be able to get all the new subdivisions so they can walk to the park safely. And without putting this multi-use path in, there's no way they can, so.
Yeah, are there any further questions or comments? Counselor McVale?
As we move forward through this IBI group and staff discussions regarding the future of who's responsible for what roads across the county, is there any comp, you know, and any thought in the fact that at some point in time, council will get an interim report to just kind of let us sitting around the table here as to what the discussions are, where they're going and not just at the end of the day, get a final report and we hit the wall at 100 mile an hour. Something that we can maybe keep us in the loop of what is going on because I, I think it would hold well for the final discussions at the end of the day.
Are there any further comments? Deputy Warden Marks, go ahead.
I, sometimes the silly things like, I hope everyone realizes where East Road is because if you were, it's been five years or 10 years since you've driven on it. We've come to council this term a couple of times lowering the speed limits and requesting more police presence to give traffic tickets to slow things down. That area has exploded in housing and fondness for people walking, et cetera. Our phones ring all the time, constantly, people complaining, you know, they're, they're walking and speeders, et cetera, et cetera. It's, it's incredible to go back seven or eight years ago, see a cornfield now it's full of houses, how fast it's happened. So I hope everyone appreciates the problem we have here. You know, it's kind of a nice problem in a way, but it, you know, when we look back, I hear discussions may have happened about a developer was willing to do this. It didn't seem to be necessary. I don't know if that ever happened. That's, that's in the past, but it is.
Are there any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oh, sorry, did you have a comment?
Just through you to Brian, now, so with regards to other communities, Elgin County downtown areas, who's responsible for the sidewalks?
Through you, Madam Warden, municipalities are responsible for sidewalk infrastructure. Thank you.
Counselor Martin?
And, and just through you, Madam Warden, we were fully intending to pay for the sidewalk. It's just doubled in price because of the style of road.
Deputy Warden Marks?
And, you know, and if we didn't put a sidewalk in, that, that extra cost of cutting grass and stuff with the hills and it'd be very uncyclable. So it's, it's sort of, you're trying to bring things up to an urban standard. Again, you know, it's, it's just, as we say, it's, it's a lot of money.
Any further comments, Counselor Ketchupaw?
Yes, Madam Warden, would you please restate the motion on the table since it's?
It resolved that the report titled East Road Multi-Use Path Funding Request dated April 14th, 2022, from the General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise and the Manager of Transportation Services be received and filed.
Go ahead, Counselor Purcell.
Just, just for my simple mind, that means that if we approve the report, it's no funding. Nothing's going forward. Just on a practical, or thinking of it as America's, not my municipality, so I'm not advocating either way, but basically when you look at what's, should be covered and what isn't covered, is this an opportunity to simply move the 2030 funds to coincide with, harmonize with the project in Port Stanley, where Stanley picks up their fair share? That work gets done simultaneously. Would that help the cost both ways? Is it too premature to do that with five or seven years?
Through you, Madam Warden, certainly based on road condition, rehabilitation of the surface isn't warranted at this time, but that's ultimately a decision of council.
Counselor Menel?
You've got potential to open Pandora's box here because every municipality has got a county road going through it with, with sidewalks that need to be repaired. And traditionally, it's been the locals' here's responsibility. And I think if we, if we allow this request, as I say, it could be a Pandora's box. So I, I'm in favor of the suggestion by, by staff.
Any further comments? And we're all clear with the resolution? Okay, with no further questions or comments, all those in favor? And that's carried. The next item up is Donation Policy 1.1.
It resolved that the report titled Donation Policy Number 1.1 dated March 29th, 2022, from the Chief Administrative Officer be received and filed and that Elgin County Council hereby approve Donation Policy Number 1.1.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Chiguer and seconded by Counselor Menel, and I'll turn it over to you, Julie.
Thanks, Madam Warden. Through you to members of council, the purpose of this report is to provide council with a draft policy, donation policy for your consideration. The policy provides guidance to Elgin County Council, committees and county staff and applies to all fundraising activities conducted for the county of Elgin. Details for acceptance of gifts is also included in the draft donation policy for your review. A written gift acceptance policy can help manage the expectations of donors and also serve as guidance for council committees and staff who are either on the asking, receiving or receiving end of contributions. So with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Julie. Are there any questions for Julie? Don't see any. I guess we'll call the vote then. All those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. The next item up is Response to Ukrainian Crisis.
It resolved that the report titled Response to Ukraine Crisis dated March 22nd, 2022, from the Chief Administrative Officer be received and filed and that council support the humanitarian crisis in Ukraine through non-financial means such as raising the Ukrainian flag at the Elgin County Heritage Center and undertaking a communication strategy to raise public and staff awareness about the ongoing crisis.
Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Purcell and Counselor Jones, and I'll turn it over to you, Julie.
Thanks, Madam Warden. At the county council meeting on March 22nd, 2022, Counselor McVale made a motion that a report be brought forward to council at the April 6th, 2022 meeting with recommendations regarding a possible financial contribution from the county of Elgin to the Canadian Red Cross in light of the humanitarian crisis in Ukraine. That report was deferred to today's council meeting and essentially recommends that council consider non-financial means of supporting the Ukraine crisis, which includes flying the Ukrainian flag at the Heritage Center, which has already been done, and undertaking some communications efforts in order to raise public awareness amongst our community, council and staff. So the report is self-explanatory, but I'd be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Julie. Are there any questions? Counselor Martin?
Just a comment, I've had three people commend the Heritage Center on putting the flag up. And I said, it's the county. And they said, no, it's in front of the Heritage Center. So just so you're aware that there is some confusion there.
If I may, through you, Madam Warden, to county council, that is the, the community flag pole, not necessarily just limited to the Heritage Center, but county operations, you are correct. Thank you for bringing that up.
Are there any further comments about this report? Counselor McVale?
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden. Certainly, I would like to thank staff for pulling this report together fairly detailed. And I, I guess the policy is the policy, I certainly understand that. And I know this council put the policy in place and at some point in time, maybe we need to revisit this policy, but now is not the time.
Counselor Purcell?
Yeah, I'm fully in support of this, but there is one suggestion. Now, the Red Cross has put out the Ukrainian flag with their contact information below it. I know in our particular municipality, I, I bet you 95% of the businesses on their doors are displayed. It accomplishes what was suggested about money going direct to the Red Cross. We know that's a safe place to send your money to have it invested in this thing. Something that we may be able to get a few of those and prominently display it on windows, much like our first businesses or our citizens are doing. A lot of houses have it too.
Counselor McVale?
Just, just as a side note, driving in this morning, the estimated count of refugees coming out of Ukraine is now at 8.3 million.
Are there any further comments?
Just, if, if I may, just a comment, I want to thank Counselor McVale for bringing it to our attention, just the fact that we're talking about it. I, I think it'll probably spur individuals to give, and that's a good thing, so. Yeah, your heart goes out to them. It's, it's, it's hard to watch TV some nights, but the fact that we're talking about it and simply urging residents to do what they can, I think that's a good thing.
Counselor Martin?
Yeah, just one thought I had had before, and I certainly have already supported the Red Cross and their efforts, and I'm sure many of you had, was just that if, because I agree that we don't, shouldn't take taxpayers' money and give it places that we don't have that right, that they should determine when they make donations. But I just wondered about a challenge even to county council to take a certain portion of their monthly salary this time, this month's salary or something, and make a donation. So it's just an idea. I'm not pushing it, but it would be a nice gesture that we could do as a group.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. Are there any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. We'll move to council correspondence.
It resolved that correspondence items number 7.1.1 to 7.1.2 be received and filed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Jones and Counselor Chiguer. And does any counselor have a question about these particular items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. Move to other business, are there any statements or inquiries by members? Notice of motion? Or matters of urgency? Closed meeting?
It resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the municipal act to discuss the following matters under municipal act, section 239.2, in camera item number one, 239.2A, which is security of property, and in camera item number two, 239.2B, which is organizational update.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Ketchupaw and Counselor Menel, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. And we'll take a brief moment of.
Here, we're going to go to the county office.
Welcome back, everyone.
Carolyn, Carolyn did say to me.
Motion to rise in report?
It resolved that we do now rise in report.
Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Menel and Counselor McVale, all those in favor? And that's carried. In camera item number one.
It resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Menel, seconded by Deputy Warden Marks, all those in favor? And that's carried. In camera item number two.
It resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Jones and seconded by Counselor Ketchupaw, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. Motion to adopt recommendations from the committee of the whole.
It resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the committee of the whole.
Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Purcell and Counselor Martin, all those in favor? And that's carried. The next item is consideration of bylaws.
We had a first, second and third read of bylaw 20 dash 20, sorry. We had a first, second and third read of bylaw 22 dash 20, being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the municipal council of the corporation of the county of Elgin at the April 26th, 2022 meeting.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Jones and seconded by Counselor Purcell, all those in favor? And that's carried and adjourned.
It resolved that we do now adjourn at 11:11 a.m. to meet again on May 10th, 2022 at 9 o'clock a.m.
Someone to move and someone to second. Deputy Warden Marks and seconded by Counselor Ketchupaw, all those in favor? And that's carried. And thank you very much, great meeting.